I know what I just. I don't want to take some time for five seconds on my hands.
Worked the latest seventy-five and I think she said.
All right. At this time, we will begin our work study session for May sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Present.
Mr. Hall.
Present.
Mr. Robert.
Present.
Mr. Miller.
Present.
Mr. Strayer.
Present.
Mr. Castleberry. Mr. Gough.
Present.
All commission members present.
At this time, I will turn it over to our city administrator, Greg Elliott.
Thank you, Mayor. So for our first item tonight, I invited our chamber director, Matt Schwartzlander, to be here to speak with you. We have honestly had some concerns about our relationship with the chamber since the merger. This particular came up around our rejuvenated farmers market, and we really wanted to get some good attention for that, reached out to the chamber, met with Matt after the DDA meeting in April, although we communicated with them certainly many weeks ahead of that, trying to get it mentioned in their e-blasts and their promotional materials that they put out. Really weren't getting anywhere with that. I got some pushback in terms of the date, which you will all recall is not a new date for our farmers market. That's always been when it was, but some pushback because it was not on a different day than Tecumseh's, which they run, and I understand they run that, that that's a different arrangement under the grant that they have there in Tecumseh, but we just wanted ours mentioned in the same breath. Today, for the first time in an email we got from the chamber, it was, it's mentioned right after Tecumseh's in the list of upcoming events, but it would have been nice, given that we're trying something new this year, if that had been happening right along, and now we're kind of, you know, just ahead of the opening weekend, if you will. So there was that, and then we got the, you all saw the email that came out last weekend, last Saturday regarding support for Project Phoenix. That was purportedly on behalf of the members. We are a member. We've been a member for years and years of the chamber, probably since it was reconstituted back in two thousand and two, although I can't say that for absolute certainty. We're one of the larger members. We have, we, the fee that is charged to members is by employees. We have roughly a hundred and thirty-five employees. That makes us, you know, one of the larger members, I would suspect, in the community. We weren't consulted about that position. We were obviously disappointed in that position. We had just noticed our special meeting that we had a week ago tonight on that topic, and, you know, a position was taken in advance of that that was contrary to the position that we were taking following Monday night. So just feels like, you know, we have not been represented as a member of the chamber that are, you know, we haven't been getting much out of our membership here in recent weeks or months, I would say, and I would point to the, to the merger of the time that that started to wane. So we wanted to give Matt a chance to come and speak with you, engage with you. You will, those are my thoughts. Those are not necessarily, obviously, the commission's thoughts, so give you the opportunity to share your thoughts with him as well. So with that, Matt, I'll let you go ahead and have the floor and commissioners engage with you on this topic.
Where shall I start from?
Anywhere. It's, it's, there's not a good angle to be honest with you. Somebody's always going to be behind you.
On one end or another.
It's technical. It's not the best room for that.
So I have some packets here for the commissioners, associated with some business cards. First of all, I wanted to say thank you for, and I'll jump back and forth.
Sorry.
Mary, sorry. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. One of the things that we've been working hard as an organization over these last couple of months is to get out and speak and make sure that what we are doing is understood and where we are going, the most important piece, is understood. And so within the packet that's working its way around, I want to briefly talk about the process, how we got to where we are, you know, kind of where we're going. So last January, first of all, I want, would like to introduce Karen Dominique, our current board chair for the chamber. Last year in January, we started in the conversation of what does a chamber partnership look like between the Adrianian Area Chamber and the Tecumseh Area Chamber? The leading conversation at that point was Vicky Riddle, the executive director for the Tecumseh Area Chamber, and announced her retirement, and so they were looking for an executive director. The Adrianian Area Chamber at that point was looking for a marketing and events coordinator of which they had. And so that first initial conversation really made a lot of sense, but then as we continued those conversations, a lot more started to make sense of how we, as two organizations, could work together to benefit our businesses, organizations, and our membership. And so we started really at the board level, had those hard discussions on what does that look like? What are the things that each side was not willing to give up? From there, a transition committee was formed for people from each board to break that down and then start to figure out, how do we get through this conversation? What does a partnership look like? Do we even want to? And kind of what does this whole thing? What does the timeline look like? When are our dates that we need to have outcomes by? And when do we say, this isn't what we want? We're better as two organizations. So that transition committee set up six subcommittees, one for governance, finance, membership, staffing, physical needs, marketing and branding, and programs and events. Well, the purpose was each of those committees was to really break down the two organizations. What worked? What didn't? What did we want to get out of each piece of those that would strengthen our organizations? And so throughout last summer, we did surveys. We talked to members one-on-one. We had a lot of different conversations on what this thing could look like. By the end of the year, a lot of those conversations had come to fruition, a lot of different outcomes out of those. The important ones, the new mission of the chamber organization is a membered organization committed to encouraging, promoting, and building local businesses with the goal of community enhancement through economic prosperity. The vision for the chamber, the chamber will be a first-choice hub of business growth activities, resources, and relationships. And then we really narrowed it down to four core values. Advocacy. The chamber advocates for the benefit of all of its member businesses, large and small, within its local area. And examples of chamber advocacy, including shop local campaigns, legislative engagement, leadership training, and talent development, a wider range. Unified. The chamber is a thriving group with significant diverse characteristics, such as business size, sectors, geographic locations, and service areas. All these distinct differences provide a wealth of knowledge and experience which are melded into one unified organization with a common purpose to drive economic prosperity. Valuable. The chamber offers a broad range of services to support and benefit our members. From leadership development to networking and educational seminars, the chamber services provide a rich opportunity for businesses to strengthen their workforces, connect with like-minded professionals, and stay current with important issues affecting the business environment. And I think the most important, relationships. The chamber strives to go beyond simple interactions, networking, to build strong relationships. The chamber members are friends, neighbors, and colleagues. As the chamber through its programs communicates with these members, relationships are formed. Strong relationships lead to trust, which creates a vibrant environment for successful businesses. So a lot of this is a big mentality shift for both sides. And one of those big mentality shifts is the recognition that a chamber is a 501(c)(6) nonprofit, not a 501(c)(3), which is your most thought-of nonprofit, Boys and Girls Club. We do not accept charitable individual donations. We accept, we're funded through corporate donations, corporate marketing dollars, which are business write-offs for those businesses. And in one of the biggest mentality shifts has been the organizational change, and this is something I've talked quite a bit about. In the world, there are two types of chambers of commerce. One, that's focused on community events and bringing people into their community. The other is business-focused networking, education, relationships, and advocacy. Our two-chamber organizations were distinctly different in following those two aspects. Bringing both of those things together provides, one, a lot of opportunities, but also a lot of challenges in deciding at what point, what is important in those? How fast do we get to those important pieces? And where in the process do we start bringing all of those things? And I think that's probably what has gotten us to the conversation tonight of what we are doing as an organization and how we are going to benefit our businesses and organizations here in Lenawee County and in Adrian and Tecumseh and everything. So I've got a couple of things there about benefits from and through. Read that. I want to talk more about where we are going and how we are getting. So we also did a strategic plan and came up with four imperials. Number one, in the next five years, we will work together to grow the membership of the chamber by one hundred percent with a total membership of at least eight hundred at all levels. That's a big goal. Very big goal. Tecumseh had around a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty members. Adrianian Area Chamber had roughly two hundred and eighty. So neither organization is going to get close to that on their own, but also our greater Lenawee Chamber is not going to get close to that while working just in Adrian. Our goal is to eventually work with businesses, and we already do, work with businesses across the county to support those businesses and their needs. I will come back to that piece. Number two, in the next five years, we will develop and implement markets and market a broad range of educational trainings, programs based on membership-driven demand. Number three, in the next five years, we will create opportunities for members individually and for the chamber as a whole to build networking and professional relationships and promote the chamber and its members to the public. And number four, in the next five years, we will lead an effort to bring the region's primary economic development organizations into a mutually beneficial alliance. Again, another big one, but this has really been at the core of all of our conversations as we've looked at what is the best for our members, businesses, and organizations in the community. And that is building more and better collaborations with our municipalities, with other economic development organizations, with anybody that wants to be at the table to have a discussion on how we can make our business environment and our overall community stronger. To jump back for a second, I want to talk through under there on organizational change, pay unified yet distinct. This has been one of our kind of core phrases that we have used throughout this process. Unified yet distinct. Unified in recognizing that we have a, a Lenawee business community that regardless of where your business is, Rigo, Toonton, Macon, Hudson, Adrian, Tecumseh, a lot of the issues that our businesses are facing, and regardless of industry, are all the same. If we can impact those things, we can have a greater impact throughout Lenawee County. The distinct portion is recognizing that we have many different communities here in Lenawee County and that the needs of Adrian, of Tecumseh, Blissfield, Clinton are all going to be significantly different. And a big piece to what we're doing as an organization, and this hasn't happened yet, and this is going to be in the process, is to go into each of our communities and figure out what those pain points are, what the challenges are, what those needs are, and figure out what the chamber can do to be a convener and bring solutions to our business community, whether it's in Adrian, Tecumseh, or elsewhere. But unified yet distinct. So then a couple of things, office location. We did a survey last summer to the membership. Four out of five Tecumseh chamber members said it was extremely important to them to have a physical office location in their community. For Adrianian Chamber members, it was one out of five. So using that information, we made a decision for our organization to use our funds efficiently, get all of our staff in one place. We'd been working about a year at that point with, with the divided staff, and it gives us an opportunity. I rarely met with people in the office anyway, when I was, when we were just there. I thoroughly enjoy getting out and seeing people in their businesses, learning what they do, how they do it, also meeting at our local coffee shops and restaurants. It doesn't do me necessarily any good to sit in an office all day. So this provides more of an opportunity to get me and the rest of our staff out into the community and have more conversations. I've also included a list of our board members in that packet. And to talk briefly on the farmer's market, I guess I would start with Greg. I would love to see those communications pre-your email in April that would provide those, the information that we would put out, and then we can kind of go from there, but there was no communication that I've seen. But two weeks ago, Jay Marks and I sat down and talked through the farmer's market, and I would love nothing more than to have a strong partnership with the farmer's market. I think Jay fully understands the benefits that come out of the market and to try to, to work with, to work with Jay and emulate the success that the Tecumseh market has had over the last several years in moving four, four and five, including Jay, businesses that started at the market now into store. How much stronger is an overall business community and we'd be if we are all working together to make that happen, not only in Tecumseh, not only in Adrian, but we have, how many farmer's markets are under our county? If we can devise a plan and come up with it to create a business incubator with that process, utilizing resources of launch, Lenawee now, there's great opportunities that we can provide to those small businesses, let alone our ad community that is looking for opportunities to engage in the overall business community. And so we've, we are working toward a memorandum of understanding that will lay out the needs and expectations so that we can have that out there of what, what it looks for the chamber to support that. But I will add that the Tecumseh farmer's market for the last four years has been a program of the chamber, of the Tecumseh chamber, that is everywhere. But that, that community got together back six years ago and had a conversation on who would be the best organization to run the farmer's market, and then they come up with the chamber at that point. And over the last three, three to four years, we got an extension, but we've been working from a USDA grant that has been administered by the city, but the market manager is an employee of the chamber, and the revenue generated from that market supports the, the chamber. And, and so while I want to do everything I can to support Jay and the Adrianian market, there, I need the understanding there that, that the farmer's market is, is part of our program, part of our funding stream. And so there's, it's, it's not just cut and dry of, we just want to support blanket. So I, I hope that makes sense and that regardless of other members who are doing such things that we don't just give away all of the, the marketing and stuff like that. We, we have opportunities for our members to advertise and promote their events. We also have like the email that was received this morning. When information is provided to us, we get that information out in that weekly newsletter at no cost.
Now. Can you, can you explain something?
Yes.
So looking at the imperative of number one, two, three, and four, you know, so there seems to be a lot of promotion of events, and I think that is also then kind of the cause and what the reason for maybe just having this discussion is because, you know, we're seeing a lot of promotion of events, but yet this is, looks all business-minded. So explain that, please.
Absolutely. So with the, with obviously, so the Tecumseh side, their focus was on the community, the public-facing events. The, the Adrianian Chamber focused on the Business Expo Summit Series, networking opportunities, which are more business-focused. We aren't generally putting that out into the general public. And so that is something through, through these pieces of how we promote our members and how we communicate that we will be developing and implementing strategy to do those things. And the reason that we do, well, just the, the five K that happened in March, the top of the morning five K, we do that event to promote businesses to the public. The Business-to-Business Expo, the, the Business Expo is a B-to-B, business-to-business. We will, and this is one thing I've talked to a couple of you guys about, but we, and I'm committing that over the next year, we will be doing some of those public-facing events here in Adrian. That is part of our development process and implementing the success that Tecumseh had with those events and what it did for their community and bringing those things to you. So we're looking at later in the fall, doing a five K event here in Adrian, as well as a, I'm going to speak generally here, but a barbecue festival next summer here in downtown Adrian. As well as what we are doing with the events that was expected with the Adrianian Area Chamber. Our Business Expo was several weeks ago. We moved that to the new YMCA, a position halfway between our communities that we could work more aggressively to bring the two business communities together. Our Summit Series, which is a monthly luncheon, moves back and forth between Adrian and Tecumseh. And so it's a part of our development, our strategy, is to continue to develop new, new events and move around the ones that we have had so that we can create success for our, our communities and our businesses. If we were just to stick with those things just in Tecumseh, that would limit our effectiveness, limit the benefits for a majority of our membership. And so we will continue to develop those, those events and grow those over the next seven years.
Who percentage of the businesses in Adrian answered that survey?
We had, last summer, of the membership, I think we had probably forty percent response rate.
Was it the same response rate as Tecumseh as it was in Adrian?
Theirs, theirs was probably a little bit higher.
Now, my question is, to stand from Adrian's perspective, why are we all upset when you're promoting Tecumseh?
Absolutely.
And we have a brand-new market. We're trying to get off the ground, and all of a sudden, it's like, we, and how we exist.
Absolutely. I mean, I think Kara has heard this from me a lot over the last year in making sure that with our events, with everything that we're doing, that we find that balance. And that, that isn't something that is going to happen right away. But I will say, over a year ago, I had the opportunity to sit with, with Greg and Angie and have a discussion on the farmer's market very early in our merger conversations that as, as the new organization, we would be running Tecumseh's farmer's market. And just an initial conversation, at that point, we decided to not do anything because of the merger, everything that was going on, that we wouldn't be able to do anything with the market. And I think, as I expressed in that email, when nothing happened this year, when we started hearing information and everything, I was surprised, I think, just as, as you were. But I think we're at a point now that we have, are figuring out a way that we can work together, and, and, and that's where we need, we need to move forward with that.
I guess I'm looking at it from the standpoint that if this was an opportunity for you to say Tecumseh Farmer, Farmer's Market is up and going again on this date, and it's an opportunity to you to drive ten miles down the road to check out Adrian's new market.
Absolutely.
You know, I guess, and so I feel like that was an opportunity lost on your end. When I look at your organizational change, or I'm sorry, the, yeah, the organizational change, this sort of shows my lack of knowledge of a chamber of commerce, but I would have thought all of those things listed would be, you know, grow up that would be under, for both Adrian and Tecumseh, not that you would be promoting events, you know, in one city more than another, and networking more in another city.
Well, now it is under the same.
Okay.
Yeah. And that's why, as we continue to develop, and we are five months into this, and, and I think that as we continue all of our internal structural changes, bringing two boards together, two mentalities, two completely separate organizations, these things don't happen over time. And we need to hear from our community, from you guys, on what it is that you're seeing so that we can take that back and have those conversations and make sure we're doing our part to address it. Because we're looking at it from our internal perspective, we got a million things we're going, we're trying to do. But when you come to the table and say, this is what we're seeing, we're going to listen. And that's why we're here. That's why we had the conversation with Jay so that we can correct those things.
Matt, I have a, I have a comment first, and then I have a couple of questions, and you can help me understand those questions. So my comment first is, you know, from a membership standpoint, when I bought my company six years ago, you know, You know, from a membership standpoint, when I bought my company six years ago, you know, you get a bill in the mail for membership dues, you pay it and, and then. I didn't hear anything from the chamber until the next year when the bill came again.
Yep.
And so I asked the former owner, I go, what do they do for us? And, and he made a very direct comment to me, he goes, go set your cash on fire. That sends you what you're doing. Okay. For me, cause you know, I have, I have a local business that's been in the city for thirty-eight years. Um, so when it comes to a, a membership fees or anything, you want to make sure that you're getting something out of it. Was it being from my personal business or the city's position, right? My last question, so you're telling me when you talked about location move, you told, you said that you pretty much asked. The employees or?
Yeah.
Or the board?
The membership, we did the membership.
The membership.
And the board, the board was a huge part of that conversation.
Okay. Cause when I look at Greater Lenawee Chamber, I mean, I would think it'd be in the county seat. So I guess, I, I appreciate you explaining why it was moved out in the first place. Um, because it seems like a lot of things are moving out of the county seat when it comes to that. So you asked, you said one in five, you said Adrian folks, right?
Yep.
Businesses didn't care, but it was important for Tecumseh, right?
Correct.
You said?
Correct.
Okay. So you made your decision based on ten businesses that gave the position on that or?
Well, that's the ratio.
Okay.
So.
Okay. My last part is, do you think it's Chamber of Commerce? Business, I'll, I'll say it, to get involved when it comes to a lobbying effort, when it comes to a project? I was confused. I read your email and published last Monday night because I thought it was, it was odd to me that. That the Chamber would get involved in that kind of contentious issue and then put our contact on it. We are not county commissioners, we are city area commissioners. So I don't know what you or your organization heard, but. Um, we weren't voting to oppose or, or support anything. So I was confused on why our, our information was, you know, included in the email when, when, when we have no county legislative power at all. So can you help me understand why that was, why that email was sent? And also why was my, mine, myself, mine and my colleagues' info included in that?
Absolutely. So I'll start with the, the value and the, the value parts of that. So we go back to. Um, we have talked about ROI in here. I will be the first one to tell you that your previous owner was absolutely right. That in the past couple of years, um, there has been really zero benefits to me and Jay. Since my time coming in, in, in twenty nineteen, that has been one of my top priorities as to, has been to. Add value with the focus on the return on investment. And that looks a lot different for different businesses, different sized organizations. Um, and in, in this I have, um, you got two ways to look at that ROI. Either from or through what you're getting from the Chamber. If you're in the from camp, you're looking to get return from the Chamber, you're looking for connections, leads, business awareness. Trainings, savings, opportunities, discount programs, those types of things. Um, and then here it goes, are you attending events, sponsoring them, tagging Chamber posts? Um, and, and utilizing those types of benefits that are listed. Or you can be in the through camp, you're looking at the big picture and know that your return comes through the Chamber. You're interested in building a thriving community, which is, has shared vision, good schools, hospitals, roads, internet. With a business friendly environment, safe streets and a prepared workforce. So to put it bluntly, we started from scratch. Building this value back into the Chamber. Making sure that there is return on investment for every single member. From the one person show all the way up to our largest employees. And that has been, I think. Jan, if I'm wrong, but has been one of the leading discussions throughout this entire. Is how do we put that return on investment back into? Cause I will not walk into a place of business and ask them to pay their dues if they're not expecting anything. It's just not going to happen. And I've had countless, countless conversations with that question that has been raised. And so that continues to be our focus as we develop and build this new organization. Of what those benefits are. And make it easy, easier for our members to, um, to take advantage of those. And so I've got some, I've got some listed. About a couple of the important ones. Uh, marketing landing page on the Chamber website. This goes back to our vision of how do we be a first choice hub of information? When somebody is looking for that plumber, that electrician. I want them to go to the Chamber website because they know they're going to find some trusted businesses in our game. And so making sure that the resources that our members can put on the website is up to date. Uh, is a great opportunity for them to catch those people coming to our website. Uh, we also have complimentary membership with the Small Business Association of Michigan. Um, and this was a big one because through them, we can now offer group health, vision, dental and 401K options for our small businesses. Big opportunity to show that return on investment. Uh, leadership development, our Leadership Lenawee Program just finished its third cohort. And takes individuals and businesses and builds better business leaders and better community leaders. One of our signature most important programs and one of the biggest things that we do as a Chamber organization is create better employees. Uh, job opportunities through MITalent.org and Michigan Works, um, business to community promotional opportunities. And this gets back to those five K runs and the top of the morning, Oktoberfest, Farmers Market. Uh, putting our businesses in opportunity to promote to the, the general community. Uh, discounts at office supplies through DBI, a local Michigan company in Lansing. That is delivering here into our community several days a week. And so you can get up to sixty percent off on a lot of the items used in your business. Just a piece of where we're going with trying to create that value. And we are continually looking for opportunities and talking to our members to develop even more benefits. That's one of the big reasons why we exist and that valuable piece of our, our, our four core values. So then I will, we'll jump back to the first core value. Advocacy. This is something that easily. The Tecumseh Chamber has never been involved in. And the Adrian Area Chamber has never been involved. But advocacy is critical to the success of our business community. And so we will be doing more advocating on behalf of our businesses. To ensure that Lenawee County and our communities have the best possible business atmosphere. But a lot of that goes to conversations and relationships. From right here in this room to the county level, to townships and other municipalities across the county. To our state legislators and our federal legislators. One of the big pieces of my position is those relationships. And then following that email and conversations, that's why I issued that apology to you guys. Cause I want you to understand that I'm not telling you. I'm giving you information from our business community. A vote taken by our Board of Directors to support the Phoenix Project. Because from the business perspective. It will bring a ton of value to our area businesses. That's the perspective that we are looking at. All of the other questions and concerns. Great. There's groups, there's organizations that can ask those questions. We are looking at it from the business perspective. That in concept, this is a great opportunity for our businesses in Adrian to come see. And if we are doing our part, all of Lenawee County. Because we're going to take that opportunity to promote our businesses to thousands of people coming into our community. And helping them spend millions of dollars that they're going to bring along with. That it's not just a win for Tecumseh and Adrian or Blissfield. But it's a win for our entire Greater Lenawee business community. And so to help you guys. And express what the business community, our Board of Directors voted on was to support this program. And we want you guys to know that the business community supports the Phoenix Project.
That may be the lightning, if you could kind of drill down on that, how that decision-making process occurred. I don't think anybody in this room as a Chamber feels like that was representative of our position. And so how did that take place? When did that meeting of the, of the Board of Directors take place? Um, what was the impetus for that? Did you notify the membership that that meeting was going to take place? Did, did the directors reach out to members and poll their membership to determine whether or not they're being representative? Uh, of the, of the member organizations? How, how did that decision make it pass?
So the conversation would have been probably September, October, probably September of last year. And that conversation happens by our Board of Directors being notified of the conversation. And providing them information and allowing them the opportunity to have discussions within their business organization. Um, and talk to others as well. Um, but our, our board, and just like, like this commission. Is put in those seats to represent the members. And on the Adrian side, we hadn't, we have an election process. We, Tecumseh didn't, but was appointed by the, by the board and the membership. We now, moving forward, have an election process for our board members. And so they are chosen to represent the voice of our business community. And so those, those processes can be made at the board level. And that's how that decision.
And that happened in September, October?
Correct.
So why was the timing, what, was the timing just?
In September, October, you, you sent out an email similar to this saying, we've met about the Phoenix Project and the board has decided to.
There would have, there would have been, yes, information sent out at that point. Yep.
So I have a question on that.
Question, although, why, why then was the email sent out last Saturday?
And also why were, why was our contact included? You know, that was my question on Monday. It's my question still, like, we're not a county commissioner for City of Adrian.
Right. Because this commission has a strong voice in our community. And at that meeting last week, this issue was going to be discussed. And it was important to us that the business, uh, community perspective be heard. Because your voice is important. And, and that's the reason. So in that email was a call to action. To have our businesses reach out and share with the Adrian City Commission and Lenawee County Commissioners. Because it's important that the people that have a voice in our community understand what that business perspective is.
I'm curious, did any of you guys get any emails from any other Chamber members from Adrian?
No.
I got zero.
No. I, I have, yeah. I have a couple of comments on that. So one, I, I think the, um, when you talk about your ROI. And the two ways the Chamber memberships get information, it sounds like the through is like that community driven at, as Tecumseh and the from is Adrian. And so, so early in your establishing a joint, um, body, you have. Established those like continuing, so the from and the through, the through and Tecumseh and the from and Adrian will stay the same because. Adrian has never experienced a chamber that's through. So you, you've moved out and, 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 and we, we won't get to see that now because you're not here in our community. And then I, I want to say that, um, the letter from the Chamber representing the four hundred businesses, um, in Lenawee County. Came out Saturday, knowing that there was, we were going to have a conversation about it on Monday. And so did the Chamber do their due diligence to represent those benefi- uh, those businesses? Did you do a study of the financial review? Um, did you have com- lots of conversation with that, um, membership? Um, and how does that relate to your core values? So. I'm, I'm confused that how advocacy unified valuable relationships and vision. Um, those core values equal you sending a, a letter to one of your members. Representing all the other members about something that is not our vote. But it's our conversation to have because we have to represent our constituents. So I'm really confused by the core values and, and what that, what that letter, um, and how that. Was part of your core values.
Sure. I'll start with the return on investment piece. That, that from and that through is not, is, is not community, it's, it's business. And the, the small business, the small business owner that is looking for those opportunities, connects. Um, brand awareness, training opportunities, those are the from. Those are the from, not, not community.
Those are, those are, those are how, you, you explained earlier, those are how those chambers have been developed. The Adrian Chamber was much more like that and the Tecumseh Chamber was much more community oriented. Those are your words that you said earlier today. So how does moving out of the City of Adrian or not doing, it, making sure that there's time to, um, give each. Community the opportunity to experience both of those sides, um, help?
A, a moving of our physical location. Means nothing to the promise of delivering our chamber and, and everything that we're going to do here in this. And through, through all of these things. And like I said, meeting with every, with people in Chopper or ZZ's Buzz Cafe. Those are the places Mammoth and, and Chalmers. Those are the places I'm meeting. I had this conversation with Greg. Greg, when was the last time you ran our Chamber office here in Adrian?
Right. Well, and my answer was, I've never have been, but you know.
We had an office that.
That doesn't mean that there was no value to have a Chamber office in Adrian. That means that particular office did not have any value.
Right. So we have put in our plan that at the end of one year, we are going to reevaluate that decision. But as fabulous as Mark and Mary Murray are as people and to us as landlords. They're in the Adrian Armory. We were not visible, people didn't know where we were and we had very little accessibility. To maintain that office space within our survey, within our other conversations, did not make sense for our work. But that renews our commitment to being accessible where our members are. And being available that when our members need to meet, whether it's in their place of business, grab a coffee or grab breakfast or lunch. That's where we are to work on those discussions and be the Chamber. And as we continue to move our organization forward, you will start to see all of those spaces. And that is the commitment that we as an organization are making to Adrian. And eventually to other communities across the country. Is to be that more visible organization.
Well, what is your, what's your goal? To achieve that, be more visible for everybody, to, uh, merge these two different ideas of the Chamber. I mean, your conversations must have put something on paper and had that discussion.
Yeah, absolutely. It's part of, a part of our five-year plan with the strategic plan. And we have, um, roughly, I think, four to five, uh, steps under each one of these imperatives. And a lot of that is the focus on, how do we get to that point where we are doing more business events and education and networking and stuff? With a Tecumseh area business and then vice versa. What are we doing? And this is, this goes back to the successes that we looked at for each order. Tecumseh was extremely successful at those community events. And that was one of the things that we looked at as an Adrian Area Chamber Board. And said, that is something that we can draw on those successes, that experience to create those. To create those opportunities in Adrian. And that has been a big part of our conversation. And is continuing. It's like we're, we're working on doing the 5K. The barbecue festival as the starters. And then in the process with the farmer's market. The Main Street conversation. There are a lot of opportunities for collaborations and we can develop more of those and be supportive. To all of these things that happen in Adrian. Are delicious. Great example. What can we do as an organization to be more supportive of?
Speaking of community events, Matt, it used to do a radio show. I think it, it was done by both chambers. You did the one here in Adrian. Where you talked about things that were happening in the community. But when you merged. You asked us to take that over as a city. You doing that. Can you explain to the commissioner why that was necessary for the chamber no longer to do the community? I, it kind of, it seems like it was within that realm of. Community event focus that you're describing and yet that's something that you brought as a chamber.
Because we, well, number one, we did the same thing with Tecumseh. And so I was doing two radio spots per week. Which just at this level took up a lot of time. But the big piece of that is that W O N was looking for just community events. And so that's anywhere from. Not only just the farmer's market too, but any, any nonprofit that would like to submit those things. Through our, our shift and it's right there in the mission. Is to be a membership-driven organization. And so, and to have the focus of a greater Lenawee business. And so in talking with Julie and Dale and Kathy at W O N. We, we made that decision that they, they thought that bringing it back into the local communities. Somebody that didn't have some of those barriers to promoting our members. So that it could be more wide-ranging for the community. They felt that was the best for that segment to represent Adrian and to represent Tecumseh. As to where we were going and, and will be developing a larger organization.
Matt, I, first of all, thank you for being here tonight and explaining to us, because this is a very serious issue on our, you know, for us. Hear that by the question. I have a couple of observations and maybe a question. First of all, I'm looking at your last page here, your executive committee, your board of directors. I see you have a representative from the city of Tecumseh. What I don't see is a representative from the city of Adrian. And I, I really don't understand that it can represent both. Why don't we have a representative on your board?
So good question. The, the board as we have now was a merger of the two boards that existed. And so Jessica Sadler was previously for several years, has been on the Tecumseh area chamber board. Previous to, to Greg, Nathan Byrd was serving on our board or was going to and then announced to the. So as we continue, I'm more than, more than happy because I think that that's an important communication piece. And to making sure that the city knows and understands what we're doing as an organization. And that the people in the boardroom and our organization know what's going on at the city.
Okay, my second observation is hold up here. Chamber website. You talk about events that support business, support citizens and everything else. What I don't see is we have an event every month called First Fridays. And I haven't seen any promotion. I haven't seen anything on your event calendar that includes that. And that is largely for both our citizens and our businesses.
Yep.
So I'm at a loss for why you aren't promoting that.
That information, so each member has the opportunity to sign on to our website. And put any of those calendar events and any of that information on the website. We don't have time unfortunately to contact every single one of our members. And to see what they're doing next week or the next. I do share consistently to social media, the First Friday.
You also promote the Second Friday information. Maybe you don't, don't know anything about it. Got a couple of representatives here for, from that. And again, that's, that is a community event. But anyway, that's, that's, I guess my question, well, that was a question, but. You talked about collaboration. And it sounds like you've collaborated a lot with Tecumseh, the city of Tecumseh. About Project Phoenix. I don't know what collaboration you've had. With our city. I don't know that you've reached out to any of our commissioners, our administration. You've taken a position which may be opposed to what one of your larger members. Or largest member, I'm not sure whether the largest, but we gotta be close. Did you collaborate with any of us, with, with any of the city administration, administration?
We, there's been several conversations along the way, but not the official. But. There have been less conversations with the city of Tecumseh.
And then I guess my last comment would be, you talked about Project Phoenix being a beneficial economic development. Opportunity for the entire county. Frankly, I don't see it that way. I think. You know, I think it primarily benefits the city of Tecumseh. I think there's benefits to Washtenaw County and Monroe County. I don't, I really don't see the economic benefit. I don't see anybody coming down to M 52 from Tecumseh to do anything in the city of Adrian. So, you know, that's an issue for us as well. We see the taxpayers' money in the city of Adrian. The city of Hudson, the city of Blissfield. I don't know whether Morencie is the city or a village, but. Again, those communities, particularly Hudson, Morencie, Addison. They are so distant and, and I just don't see what the benefit for them are. You talked about supporting the entire company, which you've got that responsibility. I still see that happening. So that's not a question. That's just me sharing my opinion.
No, and that's one of the huge challenges of this whole thing. And, and I think that's why it's important that we continue to build collaborations around this. And we work with Lenaway Now and visit Lenaway, the local municipalities, other nonprofits around the county. To tell the story of what happens in each of our communities. And it may not be a, a benefit that weekend that those people are here. But it may be when they're looking for their next weekend getaway. And when we were in Tecumseh, we heard about the Irish shows. We heard about this event, these events. Are delicious. We should go back to that. There's, there's a lot more opportunities to just the person in that weekend. And that's where us working together to tell that story is great. Because we could sit back and let it only benefit Tecumseh. But that's where, where all of us working together can, can create impact.
I, I, I'd like to chime in for a little bit. So first of all, I want to thank you for coming today and. For those that don't know, Matt and I had a couple of face-to-face conversations and I've been appreciative of you. Your willingness to meet with me and have those conversations. So I do want to thank you for that. I, I appreciate that you sent the follow-up email to the city commission after I requested, you know, or informed you of how. It appeared to be. And so I, I do want to thank you for that. I, I do question why you send a follow-up email to the whole members since the initial email went to all. Chamber members and to me, that still makes the city of Adrian have a little bit of a. Not sure how that, I don't know how other businesses view the city of Adrian's position, but. Now that it's come out what our position was, maybe they're okay with your email and our position. I don't know. Going to, to the member benefits, you have on here a couple of times. Exclusive member e-blasts with news resources, event, business-to-business promotion, business community promotion and. Opportunities and I, I liked your Facebook page while I have, you know, a long time ago and I just been scrolling through. The last two First Fridays are not on there, but maybe that's because you, we don't put them on your calendar. And that wasn't something that I was aware of that we needed to do. You've, so does that mean if I look on the calendar, saw some of the site? Opening up was on the calendar. That's how you found out and within three hours it was shared to the greater county. A greater Lenawee County Facebook page along with the daily breads, having a new director of the Lenawee Humane Society. Oh, the sweet boutique. There was one written by the chamber for Pentamere Wine for their 20-year anniversary. The other four were shared by someone from the chamber to, to your. Directly from their pages to the chamber page. And when I chatted with you at the expo. We didn't want anything extra. We don't, at least as far as I know, Jay and you can chime in. I don't want anything extra or different than what you've done for the daily bread, what you've done for Sweet Boutique. I just want to promote it. I mean, Jay's been putting stuff out on the Facebook page. I went back since February 16. And so sometime in the last three months, almost. And you knew about this because I've had these conversations with you. So it's, Greg, all we wanted was you to share that post. And we probably wouldn't be here today.
There's, with, with a lot of that stuff, it's, it's myself or Megan or our new events manager. But scrolling Facebook as we do from time to time, just looking for stuff. And so obviously a lot of that is timing specific on when we're catching stuff, when we're not. So, but within the e-newsletters and those types of things, when we get information. Just like the one that went out this morning that had probably a number of different members of promotion. As we, we get that and then that is where we can also, we also share stuff to social media. We'll also be pushing the more like the marketing landing page. You can do press releases and, and post articles through our database or through the backend. That will populate our website and everything. Those are things. As we continue to work through the transition, we will start pushing to get out more and everything. And that's gonna make it easier. On our end to find content to share. And so this is.
Were just random.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. And so it, this isn't.
But even after I asked you to share the information, it still wasn't shared. That's, that's, as I've told you, that's my, that was. And then you, you know, Greg, you know, this memorandum of understanding, it's not, we don't want. We don't want anything that these other businesses aren't already getting for free. We just want the same as all the other businesses. Understand that the, that you're getting paid from, from USDA, from some grant. I'll go above and beyond promote Tecumseh farmer's market. Totally get that. We were gonna apply for the same grant. We did. Okay. So, but you know, that will work towards our promotion. It's just. Tired of Adrian not getting the same service as other communities. That's where I'm coming from. That's what it feels to me.
I have one more comment. You mentioned Lenaway Now and, you know, they're partners, they're part, part, they're partnering. They're partners with the chamber. But I also know that they've refrained from making a decision of support or opposition. Until they get more information from the county. And as far as I know, they haven't gotten that information they've asked for. It's the same information that we've been asking for and haven't gotten. So I'm not sure where they fit into the equation. But again, you have come out publicly in support of Project Phoenix. And one of your collaborators and one of your biggest members have not. So that, I think that's just. That's an issue.
And, and I know you and I have had conversations, several. I, I'm still trying to wrap my head around it. I, I know you've explained it, but I'm still. Trying to wrap my head around why a chamber of commerce is doing anything community event related. I mean, I understand. If there's a business attached to it or businesses, but you know, I had that discussion with you that, well, we have. Is it Lenawee? What are they doing? Like, isn't that what they should be doing? And shouldn't all of our different townships, municipalities, whatever it might be, start be promoting our own community events? And shouldn't the focus be on business? But can you elaborate on that a little bit?
Yeah, absolutely. And again, Business Lenawee is one of those, those other partners, completely separate organization, separate mission, separate. Directors. But we all have, just like Lenaway Now, we all have our lanes within the economic area. And Lenaway Now is, their main core objective is to get people into hotels. So that they can put visitors in the. And in regards to, to the chamber. I mean, you have to look at each organization, separate organization. Had a conversation at some point, what is the biggest need within our community? And for Tecumseh, that was the community events. And they've been very successful. Adrian Chamber throughout its piece has decided that wasn't important to the membership. That the business expo and the summer series and networking leadership development, those pieces were important. And so it's. It's not simple, I guess, but it's, but it's what, what is that value? And so that's the conversation that we're continually working through on what that value is. And, and working within our piece of that economic area. And supporting our partners in Business Lenaway and Lenaway Now and what they do. And we are not always gonna agree. I don't expect that. I don't think anybody does. But in the end, if, if they want to ask the questions. That we're not asking or, or otherwise, they're representing their board and the people that they work with. But with Business Lenaway. It, it's tricky because again, their main core is to put people into hotels. Are those people coming from Lenaway County? No, they're coming from outside of our community. So they work in that two to three hour away gap. To promote the community, promote our assets and get people to come and stay in the hotels. In regards to the community events, there's. Their role is decided by that board and how involved they want to be in promoting. But I know they do promote outside of the area several of our community events.
I mean, I just feel like it's kind of gotten into this pickle because, because of the community event side of it, like. It's one thing if, you know, and, and I think a lot of this has been, there needs to be more communication, you know, like. If businesses want to promote something or if a municipality or a community want to promote. You know, it, it has looked exactly like Commissioner Roberts said. It is looked that way from, from watching, you know. The blasts that I get, the, the, you know, anything social media related. But now knowing that it's, well, it's if we find it and it needs to come to us, but I think that needs to be communicated, like these things. Need to be brought to you so that they can be promoted and there needs to be an, an accessibility. To the chamber so that they know that these services can be provided. So like, let's, let's use. Christian Health's business, you know, let's say he's gonna do some community event, it's like really gonna help the community, but that's also throwing his business. Like, did he know he should reach out to the chamber to get that promoted? I don't know. I don't know, I don't know if the businesses really know that.
Yeah, and that's part of, as we develop, I mean, we have things as an organization, we have to get better at and will get better. And that communication piece, how we get information, how we communicate all of that information. Is something I'll tell you, absolutely, we need to get better. And there's, there's a number of other things that we need to get better at and, and how we continue to develop and promote our communities.
I would, I would agree with that. And we're in a position because, you know, while we're a member, we are the community. We have an event like the farmer's market. It is a community event. It's also our member for that.
We have an event like Farmers Market, it is a community event, but it's also our member of that. You did get a press release, like everybody else did, on March ninth about the new Farmers Market, about it. At least at that time. And yet here we are, today is May sixteenth, we're coming up on the first market and the first mention of it in any of your legislative literature was today. I'm very disappointed with that. That does not feel like we're getting our member benefits of being a member of the Chamber. That does not feel like Adrian community events are being looked at same scrutiny that other community events are, to Mr. Robert's point. I I find that disappointing.
Conflict of interest for you to have Visiting Farmers Market and represent businesses in other municipalities as well? You think, I mean, have you had that conversation with your board? How do you, how do you represent the Farmers Market or to come see, which is a is a community event? And I know that there's some ownership and there's some grant funding there, but what does that look like to other municipalities and organizations in your or businesses? Do the, is anybody else, can that could be a conflict, why we, you know, work members and expect the same thing?
No, I don't see it as a conflict at all, and it's an opportunity for, because it was a program of the Chamber, will continue to be a program of the Greater Lenaway Chamber. One is an opportunity for any of our members to use that vehicle to promote their business, but also as a key stepping point for our organization to have the conversation in other communities of what we can do to support the markets and utilize the Chamber resources to support those small businesses and and ideally put more people in the position to be J marks, to be Anthropophagery and Paper Street Soap and Downtown Tecumseh. If we can put ourselves in a position as an organization to do that in each of our communities throughout Lenaway County, really regardless if we own it or not, that's a huge success for our entire Greater Lenaway business.
I guess my last comments will be this. In reference to the memberships, I'm going to be a little not political here. I'm going to say that, you know, when I spend money on my business, I want to get a return on. You know, this is before Matt's time here with the Chamber. But I I cut it out because again, it's like I'm not, I think when people open up new business, they always say, oh, got to do it in Chamber Commerce. That's like, it's like one-on-one and business one-on-one when you start, right? But as you go through, it's like you want to check your check, you know, check your budget, you want to see that, are you getting a return on that? Even if it's, back then, it was what you remember, you know, three hundred bucks.
Three hundred bucks.
So same, same. So again, three hundred bucks, three hundred bucks to me, and if I'm not, if I'm just burning it in the trash, I'd rather put it in my pocket and go have a beer with it. Now, when it comes to the city's position, I I guess, being a part-time employee, I'm looking at him. I see the frustration in his face, you know, when you know, when it comes to, and you know, and and what he's saying about, are, is the city getting a return? Are we getting a return on our investment when it comes to market? Or are we being, or are we stepkids, right? And we all know how, you know, the analogy I use there. So again, like Commissioner Roberts said, it seems like everything is 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 changing in the county per se, and the focus has been shifted out of the county seat. And and I think that, you know, might be personally, I'm a little dragged in and 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 take his guidance on this, and and then clearly he's frustrated with with what's been going on. And do we have assurance or or do we have to keep our thumb on you guys when it comes to not treating us like second-class citizens or or members when we are the county seat and a relatively large member? So.
No, you have, you have my commitment. And this is a conversation that we are having and will have with a lot of our members on making sure that that return on investment is seen, not only in in a hard number, but in what the Chamber does throughout our Greater Lenaway business community. And it is important to every member, if it's a one-person show all the way up to the city, our universities, hospital, local school districts, that are paying dues and being a part of our organization, that we are showing that return on investment. And so you have my commitment that we will have those conversations, hard if needed, to make sure that we are showing that return on investment and being the best possible Chamber organization that we can be, or Adrian, Tecumseh, and everybody else in Lenaway County equal. That's that's part of our commitment during this transition and to make sure that those things happen.
Again, thank you for being here tonight. I've got a couple of things on the agenda I think we need to talk about. Yeah, we do, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, we haven't really left enough time probably for both of you, but let me introduce the next item that will be some of the action items. Michelle, can I have the map that sent you earlier? Oh, this is the location of the South Main pedestrian tunnel that we're working on and designed for. The project is being administered by Lenaway Now, they received a grant funding from the state and will be receiving the funding, funding from HUD, additional federal funding from HUD for this project. So through the design process, one of the issues that we confronted was trying to make the tunnel feel safe to pedestrians who are approaching it. That's always a problem with the tunnel, but it would be more particularly a problem if the approaches were not inviting. And and we realized that we had a very narrow amount of right-of-way as it, consisting right-of-way for the trail as it approaches this intersection with South Main. And of course, it's got to go quite deep at that point to get it under under Main Street. And so what was happening was sort of a camber approach where you were entering a very deep camber with sheer walls on either side and then approaching a tunnel. And it was the opposite of being inviting at that point. And so our private partner went out and was able to acquire the lots that are highlighted in blue on either side of of on either side of the tunnel or proposed tunnel, the trail location on the west side of Main Street. And those are the two that we have on the agenda tonight to, you know, theoretically purchase, but that's just a way of getting the private partner's money back. The money will come from the project funds that Lenaway Now is holding. We will agree to buy them, but that purchase will be funded by Lenaway Now. So that's, those are all done. And what that will allow is for us to lay the bags back and create a whole terrace area that would be open and inviting at Parklight, at Wilmwood Park, in fact, setting. And it also allows for very free access that because you can grade it gradually and have an appropriate ramp down to the elevation of the tunnel entrance. So that's a given on that side. The challenge then is on the east side. To the south of the tunnel location is gas station, and we really don't want to mess with that in any way. So what's going to end up happening along that edge of right-of-way is that you will get that steep concrete retaining wall in that location. But for the north is a is a house which, as you can see from the highlighting there, already encroaches with respect to some of its outbuildings and is extremely close to our property line with respect to the foundation of the house itself. It's a lot that has true cash value on it of around fifty thousand dollars. We really would like to proceed with acquisition of that property as well and out of project funds. But the owners, though, they've been offered by the private partner quite a bit more than that, have not been receptive so far. So I don't think you have probably time to have this discussion tonight, but the discussion I would like you to have and you need to have fairly soon is, are we okay with moving forward with the process, potentially the process of the combination? It's really necessary. Almost from a a standpoint of the project being buildable, but certainly from the standpoint of it being buildable in a practical sense and in an economically viable sense to acquire that lot. Yeah, the, if if it were even practically possible to build a retaining wall, the cost would be astronomically higher than the cost of acquiring that property. That's the question that we were going to have discussion on tonight. Maybe we don't really have time in the ten minutes remaining to do that, but at least you understand then also what the action items are. That's all I'll say about that right now unless there are questions about that.
What what is our deadline to make these decisions?
Well, before we have, before we take the project out to bid, we got to decide what else we're going.
So we said, can we have this at the next, I mean?
We can, but it, time is getting short for that. We we expect to have a, want to have a bid package, I don't remember the exact date, but I think it's August when we want to be going out to, out to bid.
So if we, am I understanding correctly, if you, if we can get ahold of that other property, we would grade that similarly to the other entrance. I've seen quite a few in other cities, none in the United States, but many of them that are graded one side and retaining wall on the other, and it is quite pleasant, and it's a nice way to enter a tunnel like that.
Well, and again, then it allows for barrier-free access from both sides of the street. Right now, as it stands, without that, we would only be able to get barrier-free way.
Yeah, I I'll just say really quickly, I'm still uncomfortable with it. I had that conversation with you, it's not like this is something new. You know, it's going to take some time to really process this because I'm still uncomfortable with the fact that just because we put a trail there, that now we're going to come in and say, well, now we're taking your property because you're in our way, and we're trying to put a tunnel in and it's got approved. Um, you know, it'd be one thing, I I realize there used to be a rail, you know, railroad can come in and do that. I understand that, that's real property, that's how it kind of works with the easements and all of that, but we're not that. And i- if you, I I'm just struggling with it. I'm just going to be very clear, I'm very, I'm struggling with this. You know, I do understand that it would still be that some of that is our property where the outbuildings are, you know, and some of that, and you know, that makes sense, and and I do know the cost, but I'm just not fully on board with just taking somebody's property because we decided what a tunnel and trail right there. But I'm not saying I I won't come around.
And even your your thoughts, as you think about this, the fact of what it would look like if we did. Right. What it would look like is there would be a house foundation and then about a ten-foot rock, and well down to the elevation. And it would be not a very pleasant house to live in at that point. It's almost incumbent upon us if I do it, do the right thing and pay them for the property.
Greg, are you at liberty to say how much was offered to them?
I, it, I I understand, I wasn't party to that, but I understand it was right around a hundred seventy thousand dollars.
That's more than twenty.
Right, 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 right.
They said they wanted three times the value when they offered them three times.
But I do understand as well, there's some sentimental value, this is in the family, I mean, and I understand that as well, so that, you know.
Right, right.
It's not, it was, it was owned by the current owners of the children of that although it's a woman who had owned it who just passed fairly recently.
I'm missing something. Why would somebody offer a hundred something thousand for that building?
Get.
Well, true. Just to get it for what we're in the purpose.
To buy it for the purpose of.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it was the same private partner who acquired the properties on the other side of the street and and as part of that process approached this owner, tried to acquire this property as well.
So our resolution forty here tonight is not about that one particular property. So I guess I would like your advice, or maybe this question to Mr. Louis's advice, do we go through with voting on this resolution without the information for the other property? Because if we vote yes on this, are we locked in? And what happens if we either can't purchase the other property or it's just really financially awful to put up that retaining wall?
Well, we're going to build the tunnel either way.
Okay.
The tunnel, and so.
One side will be nice, one side.
One side will be nice and one side will be super scary, that's what will happen if we go forward like that. The party that acquired those properties doesn't want to own them, and is anxious for us to take them over.
So still.
Like I said, the project funds are there.
Okay, so we can still go through and do this resolution tonight regardless of what happens. I don't know if it's regardless or to. Regardless, regardless, right? I just regard this.
Yeah, so we probably don't have time for the our third item now. We'll turn back to you for.
At this time, we will open it up for public comment. Just to reiterate, there's a three-minute time limit, and for the record, please state your name and address.
We're almost, we're going to the South Winters Street or more, right here, like. But a couple of things I want, I said this before, and I'm going to make it clear, so I wouldn't, I do not support the new project. It's an idea from what I get from the community, from all the boards, is that I don't believe in that. It was really not a side for one. And I also, as I love, I heard in that presentation was very disappointing. I think you all did pretty well, it asked some good questions, ones I definitely thought you did. And I don't think the answer will be too great. I'm sure you guys have some feelings about it. And I definitely agree with Mayor on having some discomfort with that house, of course, as part of, it would probably be pretty miserable to live in there once the trail's there. You're already having issues with other parts, other parts of the trail that aren't well-lived and all the stuff. But I know Claire said not wanting to manage it, but I would want, you know, him coming in, then I move out. And I probably stand as well, if I got in a home, especially most from family, and I was told that, yeah, we're gonna mess up near the property or how we want to handle it. I understand that there was some expectations, no proceeds there, just kind of a present, so it was comfortable on both sides, for sure. I will probably say something regarding me as long as I still have time. But I do want to thank the mayor and Commissioner Lawrence coming out on Friday and second Friday. Of course, they just have to wear blue, so it would break the picture. And of course, thank you again, Mayor, for your help. I will have other comments later, but I'm done now.
Chamber, is, Meryl, are we spending a lot?
Yeah, just wait, wait a second. I'm waiting to see if anybody.
Hearing no more public comment, are there any commissioner comments?
Are we, are we spending all of that Chamber fees dues?
I think we got our, I think it's an annual fee, I think we got it adjusted based on our actual employees. I think we have to pay eight fifty and we pay five hundred. I just summed those two. I'm pretty sure those.
Is there a way to get our return on investment a different way?
Probably could make that reduced five hundred dollars.
Sorry.
I'd be thrilled. The Chamber was promoting Adrian into Tecumseh. I'd be thrilled if the chamber was promoting Adrian to come see with our first Fridays and our delicious and anything that we do. Because that way I would feel like people come see, for coming here, because they promote the heck out of Apple Lumpkin and their ice festival and I know people are going to come see from Adrian for them.
Do you feel well represented for, with our delicious?
From the Chelsea?
From the chambers? You feel like you get represented well when it comes to our delicious?
Well, we're not a member of the chamber.
Through the city.
Maybe to mix back, I'd have to go back and look at, see what we have gotten from the.
It's, I, I have my thoughts on the chamber and I kinda.
I went back about a year on Facebook.
This is more about principle than anything.
I don't see much. It's been ongoing, the, the, yeah, it was merging together, 850 for the last 40 years and then 500.
When I'm sitting in Florida and I see a dialogue between our administrator and Matt back and forth, him fighting for the city to be, to do something for, for the city, that's all he can know.
Is there some parity for the farmer's market or any other downtown avenues for us to maintain that or?
I don't know how we get the true value, because I haven't seen, I haven't seen the execution from the chamber that would, that would represent that value. And that's, and that's what's to be.
We could use our own.
I probably am not deeply involved with everybody else, but I, I'm very surprised by someone who is in this county, in that position, saying, all you need to do is send us something and we'll put it out. Are you out of your mind to say that?
I'm of the mindset that if I have to send it to you, I could do it myself.
All you need to do is let me know about it.
Post it as quickly as.
That's great.
Is it put on the forum anyway?
I, I don't know, I just feel like, I'd like to give them the chance. They understand our position now and.
I need to let them know.
Well, I moved on, I have. I have, I have sat with them a couple of times and I still.
For the commissioner ask.
I still would like to give you a chance.
Leslie, could you share with us your opinion based on the downtown development?
Matt, Matt was chosen and he's went through a lot of conversion and everything that's been happening and there's no doubt there's been a slant toward this county. He's come to some of our meetings, he was, he hadn't been showing up for a number of times and he's come back to the last few meetings at the, at the Adrian Main Street Board. We have an events calendar that Michelle shows every week or every meeting and it tells everything that's happening in Adrian all year long. And so I have a hard time hearing him say that he was unaware of all of our events. It's really tough to hear that, so for what that's worth, you know, but on the other side of my mind, I want to tell you this, when a, when a chamber is functioning properly, it's a value. And right now it may not be, but we need to hold out a little bit and see if they can develop what they're supposed to be doing. Thanks.
Thank you for sending a message today.
I agree.
Yes. So, does, do you want to add it to the agenda tonight? What, I do, I don't need that. Let's wait. I just wanna make sure. Okay, may I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All favor say aye. We will begin our regular meeting at 7:15.
I call to order the Adrian City Commission meeting for May 16th, 2022. If everyone would please rise for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Present.
Commissioner Halt.
Present.
Commissioner Roberts.
Present.
Mr. Miller.
Present.
Mr. Strayer.
Present.
Mr. Castleberry.
Present.
Commissioners, under Communications, C1 Finance, there is a revenue and expenditure report for March of 2022. Are there any questions or comments on that? Moving on to the consent agenda, just, I want to reiterate once again that the consent agenda does not get public comment or commissioner comments. If you have an issue with something on the consent agenda, you need to reach out to either myself or a commissioner ahead of time. We are the only ones that can take it off consent agenda and move it to a regular resolution and then that will follow the process of having a public comment and commissioner comment. So I just wanna reiterate that, just to make it clear for everyone. May I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner Halt with a second from Commissioner Gauss. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Halt.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Consent agenda approved by an all yes vote.
Moving on to our regular agenda or under ordinances. Ordinance number 22 dash 001. This is a first reading only, but it's a first reading and introduction of an ordinance to amend Articles 1 and 2 of Chapter 66, Solid Waste. Moving on to resolutions, and before we begin these as well, if you come up to make public comment during the public comment portion, it is, we do not respond to public comments, so when we don't respond to you, that is why, it is not because we're ignoring you or we're, that is just how it works. We do not respond, we may respond during commissioner comments, we may not, we may discuss it with you afterwards or at a different time, but just to be clear, I think there's been a little confusion recently and I just wanna make sure everybody knows that we will not respond to you during public comment. Resolution R22 dash 035 is from Administration. It is a resolution to approve a resolution to recommend approval of a liquor license for Brenda Rodriguez's Little Taste of Texas. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution? Receiving no motion to adopt the resolution automatically kills that resolution and it is no longer on the table. Moving on to Resolution R22 dash 040 from Administration. It is a resolution to approve the purchase of properties on South Main Street, subject to reimbursement from project funds for the South Main Street pedestrian tunnel being administered by Lenaway Now. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Gauss with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Halt.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R22 dash 041 is from Community Development. It is a resolution to approve the Michigan Main Street Program Community Requirements and Expectations Agreement and authorize the city administrator to execute the agreement. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Castleberry with a second from Commissioner Gauss. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Halt.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R22 dash 042 is from Administration. It is a resolution to approve the appointment of Jeff Rising to the Adrian DDA Main Street Board. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move, adopt the resolution? Support.
Are there any public comments?
Hi, Jeff Rising, 165 Orchard Road. I appreciate the opportunity to get back involved with the city politics, being appointed to the Downtown Development Authority Board with being a business owner downtown for nearly eight years and now a building owner. Hopefully my build, my business insight and knowledge will help out the Downtown Development Authority in working well with the Adrian City Commission, so I appreciate your vote today. Thank you.
Hearing no more public comment, are there any commissioner comments?
I'd just like to say that I think Mr. Rising makes a good point about his involvement, previous involvement with this commission and his ownership of downtown. I think he'd be a great addition to the Main Street program.
I have a motion from Commissioner Halt with a second from Commissioner Miller. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Halt.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Strayer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R22 dash 043 is from Community Development. It is a resolution to support the Croswell Opera House's application to the revitalization and placemaking program of the Michigan Economic Development Corporation for the redevelopment of 124 East Front Street. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved. Support.
Are there any public comments?
Good evening, Jerry Ryder, City of Adrian. I would just like to thank and acknowledge the city commissions and the leadership of our city administrator in helping the Croswell through this grant process and the decision to move forward as we look to purchase a blighted building in this downtown and really make an impact in developing placemaking and activating that space and really bringing 124 East Front Street into our downtown in a more meaningful way. So thank you very much for your support.
May the mayor, do we need her to state her address?
Yes, please state your name and address, sorry. 2781 Elmwood Drive.
Hearing no more commis-, or public comment, are there any commissioner comments?
I would like to publicly congratulate Jerry and Curie and everyone else at the Croswell. This is a very exciting project and I'm excited to see it go by, continue.
I have a motion from Commissioner Miller with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Halt.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Castleberry.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Commissioners, there are miscellaneous reports in your packet. Are there any questions or comments on those reports at this time? We will now move on to public comment and this does not have to pertain to something on the agenda, it can be just general public comment. We will start in the chambers first. You will see your time on the screen, everyone, everybody that comes up will get that three minute time limit and you'll be able to see it there. And for the record, please state your name and address.
My name is Todd Morgan. I was recently selected as Lenaway County District Court Judge and with so many things like that, three people are running against me, so I wanted to introduce myself, let everyone know who I am, maybe a little about me, so that you might actually consider voting for me and I may earn your vote. Also, I just wanted to also inform everyone, since there are four of us, there will be a primary, although the judges are nonpartisan, we'll be on the primary because it will limit us from four down to two for the general election. And as I said a little about myself, right out of high school, I was, joined the Navy, six years in the Navy, Desert Storm, as a nuclear machinist mate. After that, I was a single parent and when I say a single parent, my ex actually moved out of state, had lots of help from family, or else I would have floundered horribly. After that, I worked at a mental health hospital prison as a forensic security aide. While working full time there, I went back to school, earned my MBA and became a financial analyst with Michigan Rehab Services. And MRS helps individuals with disabilities to either get or keep jobs. And then while working full time there, I then went back to school, earned my Juris Doctor degree and became an attorney. I've been an attorney since 2010 and most of that time I was a solo practitioner, working all kinds of cases. And then the last two years, I've been a public defender and obviously just recently, April 11th, actually, I was sworn in as judge of Lenaway County. I also like to consider myself as civically minded. I've been a board member for the Salvation Army, for housing help of Lenaway, for Habitat for Humanity. I am a deputy commander of my American Legion post in Clinton. I was a substitute teacher. I am a member of Kiwanis, I'm a Kiwanis Foundation president currently. I am a Sunday School teacher, I'm a Sunday School or, I'm a lay minister with my church. So in other words, I do try to give back to the community and with that, I am hoping that you will consider who I am, what I've done in the past, not just what I've done in the legal bubble, but I have the experience that I think makes me a better judge. I do have pamphlets for anybody who would like one and hopefully you'll consider voting for me. Thank you.
I'll give them just a moment first. All right, hello, I'm Wookiee Ramos, 422 South Winter Street. You heard from me a little bit earlier, now you get to hear from me again. I know, exciting, right? So first I'm gonna talk as the chairperson of the All About Adrian Resident Coalition, of course, where on the side, we're the ones who went on Second Friday and all that. And I do want to mention Second Friday. It turned out, well, we're right next to this splash, but we actually got to watch them working on it. It's kind of interesting, actually, though we did make sure to give them a little bit of space because they were busy working and we were busy with our thing. But it was pretty interesting to see, we're definitely excited to see when Splash Pad is up and operational. And I also want to again thank our mayor and G Sword He and our commissioner Gordon Gauss for being at the event and showing some support, of course, and you stayed behind so that we could do some cleanup and get a little bit of my idea of some of our lighting problems are still there, though we have had some increase in lighting. We just, we still need more, please. And along with that, we'll of course have a Second Friday next month, you'll hear about that, probably next meeting. We're also gonna have a cook-off in July. Commissioner Gordon's probably especially excited about that, but you can ask him why and I'll use him for advertising that way. But, so, pretty excited about that, of course, you're welcome to come and be a part of any of these. And then I thought a community member would be here to speak about from a more personal aspect. I believe you guys have received emails already, but there's some issue with the lighting on the Kiwanis Trail in the street near it. I had written down the street, I forgot to bring that with me, but from my understanding, a few emails have been sent fairly recently and there are some concerns over there, so as has been asked for years, please put more lighting over there and hopefully we can resolve some of these. But there's definitely some concern in the community about some of the newer extensions of Kiwanis because of this. And I hope the actual individual will be here to speak on it a little bit more in specific, but hopefully you've received some emails. Thank you for your time, I'll talk to you later.
Larry Heath, 1205 Terrace, Adrian. I got this in the mail the other day and I'm sitting here reading it and I disagree with a lot of this on those totes. When you had your meeting, you said you could throw anything in the tote that you wanted to. When you had your meeting, you said you could throw anything in the tote that you wanted to, didn't have to bag it or nothing. And then you come out here with this list of all kinds of stuff they won't take. So that's something I was lied about. And then. Six-bag limit is our limit right now. We go up to fifty pounds, which means we can use a twenty-five, thirty-gallon bag. I can't get six of them on a ninety-five gallon tote. If I created that much. So actually you cut down an amount of what we can send every week. And then you got this deal here, scan me. I don't have a phone I can scan it with. I have no idea what it says. I don't have a computer, so I'm lost. And. Really, all this should have been sent out in our water bill to see if we wanted to vote on it and the stuff. It was put on the internet. I don't have an internet or anything. I knew nothing about it. So and a lot of these old women has been coming up to me, talking to me. They have no idea what's going on and they think I still work for the city, which I don't. And I can't answer questions for them. It says here the payment goes towards trash service, bi-weekly recycling, Christmas tree collection. That's not included. Yard waste, spring and fall, we've already done that. Our money's not paying for that. Street sweeping operation, that's a separate budget. That doesn't go against the trash and. I think we should be billed not on our summer taxes, on our winter taxes, or else put in the water bill. Our summer taxes are usually the big one and a lot of these older people can't afford to pay it, especially all at once. I still think it should have been a public vote on the thing myself. But some of you favored these totes over everything else. I think modern. Without totes might have been cheaper. We don't need the totes. We've been done for years without them. And our compost site out here, it needs to be open longer hours or another day a week. Thank you.
Hearing no more public comment in the city chambers, I will now open it up to the Zoom participants. On Zoom, you still must state your name and address and you will see the time limit on your screen. Hearing no more public comment. At this time, I will now open it up for commissioner comments. Commissioner Gauss.
Thank you, Mayor. As most of you know, we had a special meeting last week to talk about Project Phoenix. We didn't make any decisions. We're waiting for more information from the county. I had comments that I was going to make that night, but I didn't. I was going to save them, but I'm going to make them tonight. My comments are relative to the Project Phoenix proposal by their county commissioners. I have solicited feedback from our constituents and I've received comments both by email and phone. Ninety-five percent of these citizens are opposed to Project Phoenix. Citing the need for more important and higher priority. Infrastructure improvements that will benefit all Lenawee County residents, not just the residents of Tecumseh. And those who live in Washedon, Monroe Counties. I have serious doubts that this project will provide any economic benefits to the city of Adrian, Hudson, Morancey, Addison, or Blissfield. But yet every citizen of the county will be paying for the project. For representatives of the county and the county commission to say that no taxpayer, no taxpayer dollars will be used for this project. Is disingenuous and in my opinion purposely deceptive. This city commission works hard to be fiscally responsible when spending our taxpayers' money. Our citizens expect us to do what's in their best interest and represent them accordingly. I'm disappointed the Lenawee County Commissioner doesn't, commission does not appear to have that same conviction. Lastly, given the project Phoenix will primarily benefit the city of Tecumseh and their residents. Perhaps those are the taxpayers who should bear all the cost of this pork barrel project. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Commissioner Halt.
Kind of piggybacking on Commissioner Gauss's comments about our special meeting last Monday, I just have a question for our city administrator. Has the county reached out to you to schedule a collaborative meeting with the city or just to present to us? On the budgetary issues and the transparency issues that we brought to light last Monday?
No, not on any of the issues that were the subject of your resolution. I was invited to a general meeting called Phoenix Collaborative that. By the Deputy County Administrator. It's this Thursday. In fact, I might have received that invitation before your last meeting. That is about project vision and what community services could be within the project, but nothing responsive to your resolution last Monday.
Okay, well, all right. And that's what I thought. And I guess my question to, you know, to my colleagues is, what's our next step? What are we, are we going to continue to sit here and let them? Because I talked to a commissioner on Saturday and again, I got more confused by it. I was told that hold off on our special meeting on Monday because. There's more information to be had at the Tuesday Ways and Means meeting and the county commission meeting. I attended both meetings and I learned nothing new that I hadn't learned before the special meeting. So my question, you know, again, we are not, like I addressed the chamber CEO Matt, you know, in the back, it's. You know, why are we even included? Because we have a right to have a position on this because we are the county seat. And so what is our next course of action going to be, I guess? Because if it was such a dire need, we had county commissioners here, we had the county administrator here, we had. Tecumseh City Council members here, we had their mayor here. And and they have not gotten to our city administrator to schedule something on some of the concerns we had. It's been over a week. It takes two minutes to send an email out. So again, it's like, you know, I know where I'm at with it. You know, I appreciate on Tuesday or on Wednesday's county commission meeting, Commissioner Collins. Pretty much fighting by himself for Adrian. Fighting, fighting by himself pretty much for the feasibility of the project when it comes to budgetary, how are you going to fund it? So what's our next step? Because I appreciated that, you know, sit in that meeting. It was a very long meeting. But I appreciated we had a representative that represents us, the city of Adrian. At that level, when they're making a decision to fight for us. So what are we going to do for the citizens and city of Adrian that oppose it? Because like Commissioner Gauss says, said, the majority of them don't support the project. The majority of people that we represent don't support it. If you want, if it's a private endeavor, that's one thing. But when you're talking public dollars, you know, I wasn't elected to the county commission, I was elected to the city commission, but. When you're talking about public dollars, that does, that is our business then. Because again, having, you know, twenty percent of the population of the county, I think our voice should matter. Especially to both our county commissioners that represent us and their particular districts. So. I guess I'll, I'll yield my time, like former speakers have said, and let you guys think, what's our next course of action? Because I know what I want to do.
I have some comments. I have continued to follow the county website and I listened to the county presentations last week. I am certainly listening to our city constituents. While the flashy PowerPoints and presentations of economic development sound great, the county commission does not get to use tax paramoney to build their field of dreams. Commissioner Bolton has a responsibility to listen to the voters of her district and do what is in their best interest. She does not understand the financial risk being taken and what that may do to the people of the city of Adrian. And those that she represents. While she believes she represents Lenawee County, we have not forgotten District Five. Which should drive her primary decisions. I continue to question the transparency of the county's decision-making process. How did the Lenawee County Commission decide the location of the Phoenix project, requested bids or vet outside agencies to do the feasibility study? They have not shared the plan for funding and future sustainability. Should there be any discrepancies in the project incomes or costs or requests? And they have not requested an objective financial analysis. I can't talk, please. The county website states as still as of April tenth, it's still the same amount of grant money that was there. We talked about it on Monday. Administrator Murphy shared that no county monies have been earmarked for this project right before our meeting, the Saturday before our meeting last Monday. Which is in strict contrast to the original ARPA discussions in which half the county ARPA funds were to be earmarked for this project. If ARPA funds will not be used, what capital has the county identified to move forward into the developmental stage of this project? This project will not be completely grant-funded and will require startup capital. Sorry. Intent for county ownership or turnover for a nonprofit or for-profit identity has not been publicly identified. My original impression of this project, when they started talking about it, that was that an outside investor would be running it, a for-profit organization. However, at a recent meeting of the Lenawee County Commission, Commissioner Stimson did lead the team from the sports advisory to share that they have had better results with community-owned facilities. This leads me to believe the intent for county ownership has been the continued idea and the county commission has prevaricated about the real plans for this project. If this project does not bring the economic impact generously shared by the sports advisory. Who holds the responsibility to pay for the operations moving forward? What are the risks to the people of Lenawee County should this project's projections fail? Who is responsible for not reviewing a thorough and objective financial analysis? Again, without more information supporting sustainability and accurate financials, I question the county commission's decisions and the vote that they are moving toward taking on June eighth. I am very concerned that they have needlessly put our city and county at risk for the excessive use of taxpayer dollars should they vote to move forward on this.
I'm also going to make some comments tonight. I have received. Some comments in regard to the fact that I was absent from the special meeting and I just want to put some clarifications out there. This is not a full-time paid position as mayor or a city commissioner. I just want to clarify that. There is a lot, there are a lot of people that believe that. It is not. So unless you're retired, which there are a few that are retired up here, we all work jobs, full-time jobs. And unfortunately, I work for a job that has state mandates put on it and there are obligations I must do. In order to maintain my state funding or my five-oh-one-C-three. Organization will not exist without that state funding and the date that had been chosen. I had made sure it was not going to be on a city commission meeting night. Well, unfortunately, it did end up falling on a special meeting. There is nothing I can do. I do have to maintain my job as well as all of us up here and from time to time we may miss. This is the first special meeting I've never been able to attend. But I just want to put that out there and clarify that that was why I was there absent and it's not because. I was trying to avoid the conflict or avoid the conversation. I am more than happy to have that conversation. I do want you to know, I've had many conversations, including the Saturday before the special meeting, past eleven PM on a Saturday night. With some of those that did come and speak at the special meeting that we had. So those conversations were still being had, even though I was not here. My issue has been and will maintain from day one, there has not been communication. There has not been transparency. I do feel we were misled from the very beginning. I spoke at the meeting, back of the county commission meeting, when they were voting on that property. And I, and there was a lot that was going on at that meeting and the one thing that was said over and over again is. We will not come and ask for the public to contribute anymore. This is, this is not going to be, you know, we've got it covered. We've got a plan. We've got it figured out. Then, much to our surprise, ARPA funds become available and it was just this glaring red flag that now, not even just a little bit of ARPA funds, but we are looking at. Over half of the ARPA funds going to Project Phoenix. And what was directly said to me was. Oh, we can't make it if we don't get some of these ARPA funds. Wait, that is not what we were sold back in October. And I wasn't even on board with that property acquisition at the time. But I was open, you know, and I said, well, it passed. I will support it. On the premise that it does not come back to us, the public, to be funding it. So I feel there has been a large misleading going on when it comes, it comes to this, which is why I think it's not being transparent, which is why I think we're not receiving the communication. But I just want to clarify all of that and explain why I was not here for the special meeting. And give my opinion on the matter and I have listened to the special meeting. I've also had my phone blowing up all last week, so I've heard a lot going on from that meeting, but. I, I just wanted to make that clarification tonight.
So as Commissioner Halt said, Mayor, do you have any ideas on us moving forward this? I am really concerned that there's not been an objective financial analysis. The earnings statement and the projected costs, they don't include interest taxes, depreciation, amortization. That's a risk at best. And what are our thoughts moving forward?
Well, I do know this, that they, they need to have that conversation with us and I was asked today if, if anybody had reached possibly to me as opposed to the city administrator and both. The city administrator and I have not been contacted at all. I researched, I went through all of my spam email and everywhere looking for any contact that has occurred. In fact. It has been repeatedly asked for there to be a conversation with us and it's been completely ignored except for. A secondary person who's not even on the county commission reaching out to me. As that, as that person, but you know, they, they just cannot ask, in my opinion, there just can be no asking of any public funding. That's what we were told and I don't see how it can support. I thought it at the time too.
Well, they're going, they're, the county's going to own the building now. That and like the mayor said, it went from a private venture. Outside of the two-point-three million dollars to now the county's going to own the building and the property. So my question over the weekend to a county commissioner was, okay, well then what if the management company, who gets the profit? Does the, does the company get the profit? Does the county get the profit? And that county commissioner did not know. Again, I'll say, like I said Monday, I am baffled by the lack of how we're going to pay for this. And we keep going on that track, we would be. Rigged to the coals if we try to do twenty-five percent of what they're trying to do right now. I think part of the problem is, is that nobody knows what the county's doing. I think I didn't care what the county did until about, until October, October-ish, you know, right? So. You know, their, your, their meetings are in the morning and afternoons and, and you know, this and that and so. But it's a big dollar amount. They're saying they have grants in hand and I asked, I challenged again, I challenged this county commissioner and I said, so the money's in the bank. You don't have anything, nothing. And so I am, I'm just more baffled than anything that they can continue pushing this cart down the road without a plan. Oh, I think that they're in too deep. I think that, that they're, they're going to try to win now by any means necessary. And the taxpayers of the whole county is going to pick up a tab for it. But again, it's like, you know, I think people need to pay attention to the county government, just like they pay attention to us. Because myself and my colleagues would never even attempt to even want to even try to get something like this through. So. Those are my thoughts, but I would like a plan on what's our next course of action. Like, and you know, again, we could talk about this as a group. But I think that the time is ticking now. I think that they are planning to vote according to whatever over the weekend, you know, in their first meeting in June. So we need to have a plan on. How we're going to address this and I'd like to be out in front of it in advance of their meeting.
I'd like to say that. This isn't our project. Project Phoenix is a county project. And the only reason that we're involved in it is because we're trying to look out for Adrian residents. And I honestly don't feel like the county commission gives two hoots, so to speak, as far as what we say. But as a body, I think that they need to listen to us. We gave them an opportunity a week ago to reach out to us. They haven't done that. So my feelings haven't changed at all on this. I expressed concern last week that. Didn't, I don't oppose this facility on principle. If the, if we're privately funded or if the. If we're privately funded or if the city of Tecumseh wants to do it, great. But that's just not the case. And the county has not reached out to us. And I think that's probably what bothers me more than, I shouldn't say anything else because, because the numbers are just scary. Like they're not paying any attention to them at all. Commissioner Halt says, what are we going to do next? I think that probably what we're going to have to do is call a special meeting and say we want to take an official vote on how we feel about Project Phoenix. It's the only thing that we can do. They can snub their noses at us after we do it, but at least we can say to our constituents that we did what we could do.
And just looking at the calendar, we do have an extra week this year, but that Monday does fall on Memorial Day. So, you know, maybe it is where we do Tuesday, May 31st and we give them till then. And, you know, that's when we're going to, hopefully we have at least some answers, some transparency, some, something by then. And, but that's going to be, you know, possibly as a date of our special meeting because that's still, you know, over a week ahead of their vote. It wouldn't be just a few days before when our regular meeting is. Just a thought to give that some time.
Yeah, and I'm okay with that, but the only, it's not going to change my mind because I know that they're going to have to use public dollars. I know it. They cannot do it without it. The gentleman from the firm that they hired said that, you know, he was talking bonds and, you know, and no ARPA money was brought up, but I know they can't fund it. I mean, they have zero grand dollars now. And it's just, I'm just, my mind's blown about how that they got so far without a plan. But I mean, I'm okay with that, but I just think that it's not going to change the narrative here. The narrative is, they don't know how they're going to pay for it.
I think that there is time to, there's been a feasibility study and they've bought lighted property. So there is some time to say, we're not throwing any more taxpayer dollars at this. They're not that far. I think the election, or excuse me, not the election, the county commission meeting that they'll vote whether to move forward with the feasibility study. And I just can't get through these numbers. They need an objective financial analysis. There is no way this is not going to cost taxpayers year after year after year after year. So there is a way to stop the this. And it is if they vote no. And so I think it's imperative that we, as a commission and our constituents, email the county commissioners. Commissioner Bolton hasn't come to one of our meetings. We have requested that she attend. I have emailed her personally and not heard back from her. It is imperative that she listen to her constituents. And I hope that all of you are emailing Commissioner Collins and Commissioner Bolton so that they can share those, that information with their fellow commissioners. It's imperative that the city steps up and shares with the county so that we, as a united front, can make some positive change.
I agree with Commissioner Castleberry. And we just add, with, in terms of the subject of whether tax dollars will be used. I've heard that there's bonds expiring, maybe they'll be renewed. Interest on bonds, the payments for those come from one place and it's from the taxpayer funds. They talk about the grants that they're going to apply for and hopefully get, and that key word is hopefully. One of my constituents or our constituents has likened that to buying a lottery ticket and hoping you win. You can make grant applications all day long, but whether you get them or not is a total, totally different story. And many times if you do get qualified for the grant or it's going to be rewarded or awarded, it requires matching funds. Well, where are the matching funds going to come from? Out of the taxpayers' funding. So again, until we get a complete and thorough and objective analysis of this project, I find it very difficult, at least personally, to be able to support Project Phoenix.
Well, sitting in those county meetings and Commissioner Collins or whether it be Commissioner Jenkins-Arnold, it's like they ask a question and they get ridiculed because they're asking questions about how you're going to pay for something. I, my mind's blown about just the lack of how they interact with each other if you don't agree with what they're trying to push. And I know why they didn't get with the mayor or our city administrators because they don't know either. They don't know how they're going to pay for it. Simple as that. Nobody here that has their own personal budget would ever think about doing a project with no ends in sight of how you're going to finish it. And, but again, it's easy for me to spend, you know, Don and Sharon Taylor's money than it is my own. That's how I've always viewed it like that. You know, so that's the way it works. That's the way unfortunately some of your politicians work too, so.
Madam Mayor, so will you call a special meeting for the Tuesday after Memorial Day weekend?
Does that date work for everyone?
I will not be in attendance, but I welcome that you support that date in my absence. Not because I don't want to be. I just, I'm out of town already.
Yeah, I was going to say that we could always do next Monday too.
Monday works for me.
Monday, that's because we have next Monday. If that would work for everyone better. Yes, no?
That Monday doesn't work for me.
So we have one person on the 24th.
Yeah.
Want Tuesday, the 24th?
We can't. It's a Human Relations Commission meeting already.
Wednesday, the 25th? Anybody?
Yeah, it's Wednesday, 20.
I can do any night.
Wednesday, the 25th works just fine.
24th, 25th is fine.
25th, does 25th work for everyone?
25th.
Wednesday, the 25th? Okay, we will call a special meeting for Wednesday, the 25th. At I don't know, what do you want to do, 6?
6.
6:00 PM? All right?
And I haven't said much tonight, but I did read through the assumptions and some of the assumptions that are made in order to make this feasible. I'd really like to go over that night if you haven't read through them before. One of the assumptions is that they don't build another one of these, you know, in the same general area. Well, this company is in business to have these built and manage them. So some other company could build one down the road in Dundee. And then what's going to happen to the one in Tecumseh? Where I work, we regularly get reports on birth rates and high school graduation rates because that's part of what I do for a living. And there, the state of Michigan has fewer and fewer and fewer high school graduates every year and has had every year for a number of years. I don't remember the exact amount. But we also do not show in the state of Michigan an increase in birth rates. And there is no increase that the reports we're getting for the next 25 years. So one of the assumptions is that there are going to be enough interest in this. And I, in the Midwest, our birth rates are going down. And so it might get built in a couple of years and we might be okay for a while. But who's going to use it in 10 years? When there's half the amount of high schoolers graduating?
And to go along with that, there is a place in Lansing where my daughter used to play travel basketball that is sitting empty almost all of the time when I drive by now. So that is a, that is a very valid point, Commissioner Roberts.
I believe this organization built one in Lansing, so I'm not, and they, they were asked multiple times, do they own any in the Midwest? And they did not share that information, but it is in their paperwork, if you read the paperwork online, that there is one built in Lansing by them, but they did not refer to that in any questions about one they ran or built in the Midwest.
Well, we will be meeting for a special meeting on Wednesday, May 25th at 6:00 PM. And just discussing it at that time. And hopefully we have heard from the county commission. May I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner Halt with a second from Commissioner Roberts and Commissioner Miller. All in favor, say aye.
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 Meeting is adjourned.